We are not getting people to respond to calls during the day. Yet, one of the impacts that we had from this with the per diem is that our call department activity actually decreased. So, the amounts we're spending, expending each month has decreased somewhat. So trying to work all of those factors into coming up with a reasonable sensible number. You know, we can, we can be exact only to a point. I can't get, I can't predict the call, the call volume, which has a great impact on the, on the call firefighters. I, I don't, you know, it's hard to tell. Uh, we have two, we have basically have the department broken into three time periods. We have the per diem time period from eight to five. Then we have a no coverage time, which means there's nobody assigned to be on call. And that is from five o'clock in the evening until nine o'clock on weekdays, 10 o'clock on weekends. And, and, and that's, that's when the EMS on-call period begins. And that goes on weekdays, that goes from nine in the evening until five the next morning. And on weekends, it goes from 10 in the evening until six the next morning. So then we have another no coverage time between six and eight or five and eight, depending on which day of the week it is. So, it, you know, the calls are pretty evenly distributed between the, uh, uh, the ones we get on the EMS on-call are pretty even with the ones we get in the no, no coverage time. But the, uh, the per diem time has been averaging sixty to seventy percent on a consistent basis, even beyond the July first time, uh, and nothing's changed. So it's been, you know, pretty, pretty consistent in that way. I don't know what else I can tell you other than that those, I, I, I don't know. Uh, Charlie, did you explain to them how I arrived at the calculations? How I took average hourly rates over a full year period each week, separate fifty-two different, uh, weeks and they, and then took the overall average to calculate what I needed?
I did.
That, that did not include increases. That did not include the increases.
Yeah, you came to one eighty-seven, but I added the three percent.
Yeah.
Percent, uh, to increase everyone, which brought it up to one ninety-three.
Mm-hmm.
Twenty-eight. We put that in the budget, but Selectman silly thought about giving everyone an hourly increase.
Mm-hmm. No, he.
Per diem.
Per diem.
Yeah, he seemed to think that we weren't paying enough and therefore we weren't having enough coverage and we didn't respond to some fire.
Mr. Silly is with us.
Yes.
So let's let him do.
Yeah, good idea.
I'll let you finish Fran if you want.
Was that it? That we did not respond to a fire and you thought if we paid a dollar more an hour per diem, we'd have better coverage?
I'm not, I'm not saying that the dollar more an hour would have solved that problem. But we, we, uh, no matter how you look at the hourly rate, we are still, I don't want to use the word at the bottom, but we're not where I believe we should be. And I don't, you know, like I made in my statement, I, I, I just don't want to see something happen that maybe could have been prevented for another dollar an hour. Um, I know it's, it, 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 you know, it's, it's sixty-five, twenty is, is what that amounts to. If, if, I'm just looking at it, if it would help the chief have more people available rather than going elsewhere would be a benefit.
If, if I may?
Yes.
Charlie, or I'm sorry, Eli?
Chief, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I understand what, uh, Selectman silly is saying and, uh, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say I don't disagree absolutely that, that it would be easier to entice people to work here. You know, one thing we just run it, we've run into a time period where people have moved on. Uh, we knew from the beginning that the kind of people we were going to be hiring, uh, you know, come from a lot of different backgrounds and some of them are young firefighter EMTs on their way up, you know, in the system. And when opportunity comes and sometimes it comes because they uh, have this experience here and it allows them to be more, uh, desirable in, let's say, full-time jobs and things like that. So we knew that, uh, going in. Uh, we've had a, a, we could say, we could look at it two ways. We could say we've been hit hard by the fact that a number of our people have moved on. Or you can say that we were successful in preparing a number of our youngsters for those jobs. I don't know which way you want to look at it, but and I think in, in some cases, and I've been told by one of our call firefighters that, uh, he chooses to work in another per diem program because he can make more money there than he can doing the same thing here. You know, and I, I can't argue with it. Uh, you know, it's, it's like we, we kind of hope that some of our own call people would, would want to fill some of these slots and a number of them do. A number of them do, but you know, it's, it's, you know, so what's, what's happened in, in, you know, what brought about the incident that, uh, that Selectman silly was talking about was, uh, I was covering a shift alone because we had nobody signed up on the per diem side for that day. And we did get a call for a, a fire at Holden's School and we were unable to respond. I notified dispatch because uh, told them they had to backfill that assignment. We, you know, had nobody else come in. There was nobody available. So, you know, that hasn't happened a lot. But, you know, we'd been covering shifts. I've been, you know, you may or may not know, I've been covering a number of them and, uh, so, you know, so that, that, that accounts for some of the, the issue. Uh, you know, I, I don't mind covering, uh, to an extent, but sometimes I, you know, I'm here a lot more than I probably should be. And, uh, I would love to be able to fill those spots. And I'm not saying that the, the, the pay scale is the sole issue here. But I, again, I, with other departments, uh, continuing to increase theirs where, you know, we're in a position where, you know, it, it could become more of a problem than it is now, but, um, you know, I, I have a number, uh, two, uh, somebody filtered a question to me once too that was saying, cause I have a, uh, two individuals that are from the Plymouth Fire Department that work for us as per diem firefighters. They are both captains on the Plymouth Fire Department. They are not paid as captains here. They are paid as per diem firefighters based on their level of certification in their years of service. Just like our regular call firefighters. So they're not getting captains paid here. And that, you know, it's a, it was a good question. It's a reasonable question and, and, but that, you know, and that's the answer. There, there's no way I could pay them what they're getting up there. So we're not, we're not even coming close to, close to what they get on their regular job. But they still.
That being said, at this point of the process, um, the, your program is with a year old in June, uh, I'm sorry, July?
It was.
Okay, um, that, you know, this is a shakedown period. Um, we are surrounded by other towns who are using this program, so it's more competitive. But at this point, I would go with what you have decided and not try to upset the apple cock. If this was an issue, it should have been brought up before this point. In my opinion, um, but I think maybe next year it would be helpful for the BOS if you, uh, give a an assessment at maybe the year and a half point of this, uh, program, um, with the figures, how many calls? And maybe at that point it could be reassessed and everything would be lined up before we're reaching this point in our budget process.
Well, it also looks like Steve, um, from what you presented on the surrounding towns, that our range is in line with everybody else. Um, you know, the, the high on some of these others is nineteen. We have twenty-two oh seven. I realize that's not for very many people.
No, it is one person.
Yeah, but, but looks like the, all of the middle, uh, rather than the outliers fall within the range of the surrounding towns. Is that correct? Am I reading this correctly?
Uh, it, it, it is in line, uh, it, it, it does appear to be with the exception of Hampton Thornton.
Yeah.
Um, okay, and, uh, New Hampton is, is basically a flat rate. Uh, but, you know, it's not based on longevity and that sort of stuff. Uh, it's based purely on, you know, whether they're an EMT or an EMT, uh, advanced or a paramedic and whether they're fire one, fire two. And, and that, you know, so, but they've got people who are EMT basics making sixteen dollars an hour. And I have some EMT basics making thirteen fifty-six or something like that. You know, so, so, you know, there's a lot of ways. And I agree with, like, Kathleen, with what you're saying too. And I, and I would absolutely welcome an opportunity to have conversation with the board about this very thing, uh, well in advance of the, of the budget period next year. Um, I think that's a great idea. And look, and look at the best path going forward. Uh, I would, my, my initial request included uh, step increases for the employees. And, uh, you know, and I, and I, and as I've expressed to, uh, town manager, uh, Smith, that I, I understand the idea, but a- about getting the, the, this year's budget proposal below the default line. So, you know, giving it more of a, an opportunity to pass. I, I totally understand that and I'm with, you know, so, but I would like to say at least be able to award some step increases. The, the call people didn't get any this year. You know, um, so.
I, I think we should do everything in our power to ensure that they get their step increases and that means not going back to default again. You know, I, I think it's important that they get their step increases and we need to make sure that happens.
If we initially at the fifteen sixty an hour, you came up with one eighty-seven. Uh, I took that and added three percent so everyone could get a three percent increase. And we came out to one ninety-three oh twenty-eight. You initially asked for one ninety-five, so we're sixteen hundred dollars off. We're still below default and I still think you'll be able to give no matter what the.
It's three percent.
It's something, whoops. Something, something else too. In my conversations with other chiefs too, and that have salary scales similar to ours, I mean, in design, not in numbers, but in design. Is that those, and I, and I think, you know, this one has not been touched in, uh, since two thousand nine. That's when it was first proposed in past. But they are actually living documents and I think possibly it would be important to, to look at that. Um, and, and look at a number of issues. For example, we're not awarding longevity this year because they simply don't have the, because we went default last year. I do not have the funds in the salaries line and that allow me to do that. So we're, we're not doing that. And, you know, that's, you know, but that was part of that, you know, that salary scale, part of that agreement. And, uh, so, but then we're not doing that this year. So I, I think that, that, that whole document as a whole needs to be looked at.
I, I just don't think this is the time for us to start going through.
Right. I, I don't disagree. Yep, I don't disagree.
Um, I'll make a motion that we accept the town manager's recommendation for the fire department salaries.
Do I hear a second?
I'll, I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Kathleen DeWolf?
Aye.
Fran Newton?
Aye.
Andy Fitch?
Aye.
Alan Silly?
Nay.
Eli Badger says aye.
Thank you very much Steve for providing this information for us.
And, and I agree, we should really explore this for the future. You need to revisit that two thousand nine, um, document and make sure that, you know, we, we get this right. It's, it's just too important a service.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I would simply add that going forward, when we do meet, it would be great if we can do it in person.
Yay.
You know.
Yeah, fingers crossed.
This could answer a lot of questions the public might have.
Yeah.
It's always good to, you know, um, bring it forward, what the status is, how things are going, um, doing it right now. Um, I don't think since the, this has to go through the budget committee and then it has to go through both. A lot of things can happen between now and next March.
Yeah, I understand, I understand what you're saying. And the irony is that we could have had this conversation at any time because I, these, my budget season never ends and, and I have this data all along. I watch it on a week to week basis. I'm sort of.
Okay, if I'm hearing town manager correctly, uh, there is a three percent COLA in there.
That's what he, that's what Charlie said.
You know, so people are getting some increase.
At least, yeah.
Yeah. Well, you know, and, but part of my one ninety-five figure was that this year, they, they didn't get the increase last year and then here we are going into another year. So I sort of moved them two steps. Was what my intent was.
And that was a, that was a region, reason for the additional, um, why you picked one ninety-five?
Yeah.
Is just shy of two grand over.
Yep.
What Charlie's.
Yes.
Figured.
That's correct.
What happened to Charlie?
He's right there.
I'm right here. I'm trying to. Well, to go from, that's more than three percent increase.
Yeah, but I was, I was going to, I was going two years as opposed to one.
Okay.
Are we ready to move on?
We've listened to Steve. We've listened to Mistress. We've listened to Alan. We've listened to our town manager. And we voted on this. On the line anyway.
Uh, are we ready to decide on rest of the line items?
I think we had pretty much decided on the rest.
I thought we had two.
It was only the salary that we were.
Yeah.
Still contemplating.
Okay.
That's what I remember to Fran.
Yep.
So the next one should be transfer.
Well, you gotta vote on the bottom line.
Gotta vote on the bottom.
Bottom line.
Go back and vote on the bottom line. I just love not being able to see things sometimes.
It's blue. Does that help?
It did.
Okay, good.
Okay, the bottom line.
Teamwork is great, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Is three hundred eleven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Kathleen DeWolf?
Aye.
Fran Newton?
Aye.
Andy Fitch?
Aye.
Alan Silly?
Did he leave the meeting?
I'm sorry, nay.
Eli Badger says aye. Now we're moving on. The next one was trans, was the transfer station.
It looks good to me.
Yeah, that's not much of an increase.
No.
I'll make.
Actually, it's a decrease.
It's, it, well, it, it.
Which is.
Well, it's more than default.
More than default, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, I'll, I'll make a motion to accept the transfer recycling facility, bottom line.
I'll second.
Any, any discuss, any further discussion? Hearing none. Kathleen DeWolf?
Aye.
Fran Newton?
Aye.
Andy Fitch?
Aye.
Alan Silly?
Aye.
Okay.
Eli Badger?
Eli Badger says aye.
Okay.
Park and Rec.
One more. It's again, blue.
Blue. Didn't I get blue?
Yeah, blue. Oh, it's kind of tiny.
It won't be.
Right.
There we go. Is that still too tiny for you?
Little, little bit.
I'll get it a little bit bigger. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
So if we, I remember from last time we had, um, uh, discussed the cleaning salary. And that went away.
It's below default. That's good.
Yeah.
Did we do all of? Oh, I don't remember whether we did part of it.
We did. So, you know.
Was it the vacation programs?
No, we haven't done any of this.
Yeah, we reviewed it all.
We did?
Sure.
Yeah, we had Ann Barney in.
Yeah, we had Ann Barney in. We reviewed everything.
Yeah, with, with Ann, but not, not, not.
Oh, we haven't voted on it yet. No.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, okay.
So for Parks and Rec, uh, it's forty-seven thousand eleven dollars.
I'll make a motion to approve forty-seven thousand eleven dollars.
Do I hear a second?
I will. I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Kathleen DeWolf?
Aye.
Fran Newton?
Aye.
Andy Fitch?
Aye.
Alan Silly?
Aye.
Eli Badger, aye. Going on to the campground.
I make a motion to accept the town manager's bottom line.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. I'll accept a motion for sixty-two eighty.
You already got it.
Yeah.
I made it.
That's right. Kathleen DeWolf?
Aye.
Fran Newton?
Aye.
Andy Fitch?
Aye.
Alan Silly?
Aye.
Moving on to the summer program.
Eli Badger?
Eli Badger says aye.
Sorry, Eli.
I think you need a cup of coffee.
I, I don't think of myself.
Well, we do, you know.
Oh, no.
Your vote is as important as ours, Eli.
Yeah, he, yeah.
My mug today.
Um, boy, it's, it's hard to say what next summer may bring.
Where's your crystal ball?
I, I know. Right now, everything looks, doesn't look very good for the winter.
It does not. But one can always hope.
Yeah.
So right now, this is the summer.
Yeah.
Yep.
Now, yeah, this is, this is where we're getting into the staffing. I, I made that, you know, comment because this is the next.
Yeah.
Growth that we have to think of staffing.
Right, that's the big difference here. If you look at the beach salaries versus what was voted upon and the default and basically the six thousand dollar difference, the big one is the, you know, she's, she wants to staff, um, the beaches more. And give them, I think she wanted to have them to have a comparable, uh, salary, if I remember correctly.
Why is there a red triangle in, under that beach salary?
I, I made a note, three percent increase.
Okay. Yeah, okay, good. Thank you. Well, I mean, assuming that life will be back to normal, obviously this is subject to discussion come May.
Yeah.
Um, I'll make a motion to approve fifty-two thousand five hundred and fourteen dollars.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
We'll call vote. Eli Badger says aye. Kathleen DeWolf?
Aye.
Fran Newton?
Aye.
Andy Fitch?
Aye.
Alan Silly?
Aye.
After-school program.
There again, all subject to, um, through the discussion.
Well.
I mean, we do have an after-school program and, um, you know.
And believe me, I do understand social costs.
Yeah.
Operating, um, a town, a town.
Yep. Well, and again, a lot of Parks and Rec is reimbursed, is, is self.
There, there is a, yeah.
And after-school is, is one of those.
You mean revenue?
Yeah, we get revenue.
There is revenue.
Yeah.
That, that comes in.
And, and sometimes I think people fail to remember that because but, you know, parents pay for their kids to go to after-school and that's why we have a program. So.
And, uh.
Yeah, the bottom line is if, another, wow, I can't see. If you go down a couple lines, Eli, I think. I don't have mine moved. The bot, there's the bottom line, one twenty-six.
Right.
Easily get half of it.
Yeah, yeah. And, and, you know, that's important. I mean, it's important for our town to have this program.
I think it'd be incumbent on the Parks and Rec director to be more for, um, for forthcoming with emphasizing that. Um, because it doesn't take much for misinformation to circulate out in the public.
You are right. Um, and you know, the advances we've made in the last few years versus what we had just a few years ago, um, it's, it's impressive.
I mean, I haven't been, I, I, I have, I have to admit, I have been happy on, I have been happy at certain times, but I think, um, I, 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 I think probably across, uh, across the board, um, department heads, and I think Craig's a good example. He has, um, become much more forthcoming in uh, keeping the board and the public, um, up to date on their activities. And, and some of the cost involved. And I think, um, we have a few other department heads that, that yes, it's going to take them maybe a little extra time sitting down with a spreadsheet and, and, um, developing, um, the system, but I think it, it, it will be very helpful to the public. Um.
I agree. And, and we had a meeting, um, earlier in the fall where the department heads all, you know, talked about what they do and we need to do more of that even, you know, at least on a quarterly basis. People need to understand the job that they're doing and the services that they're performing. It, you know, again, we don't do a good enough job. We as a town at singing our praises. We too easily can complain, but you know, there are, there are some things that we really need to brag about.
You know, to justify some of the decisions that we, that we make.
Absolutely, absolutely.
But that's just by, by, uh, my personal opinion, so we can get back to what's at hand here.
Okay, so the after-school program, that's where we're at?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to accept town manager twenty thousand two thirty-five.
I'll second that.
Um, any further discussion? Hearing none. Eli Badger says aye. Kathleen DeWolf?
Aye.
Fran Newton?
Hi, and Hermione says hi.
Yeah, and see Hermione's tail.
Andy Fitch?
Aye.
Alan Silly?
Aye.
Okay. That leaves us with the Memorial Park electricity, Memorial Park the six sixty ones.
Oh, I don't know why it still gets put in her budget where it should go to the Mar- Memorial Park trustees. But I know it's been brought up in the past and I don't, I don't know if anybody's had a good reason why it gets stuck.
Still there.
It's still, yeah, yeah. But I'll make the motion to accept, um, six sixty.
Six sixty-one.
Well, that's.
Yeah.
Department, okay.
Yeah.
The buck.
Yeah.
You're right. Six sixty-one.
You can't forget that dollar, Kathleen.
I know, I don't, I don't. I know, I don't, I don't know. One is a dollar, but, okay. I'll make, I'll make the motion for six sixty one.
I'll second.
Do I hear any further discussion? Hearing none. Kathleen DeWolf?
Aye.
Fran Newton?
Aye.
Andy Fitch?
Aye.
Alan Silly?
Aye.
Eli Badger says aye. Now the total. I'll accept a motion for one twenty six seven oh one.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Kathleen DeWolf?
Aye.
Fran Newton?
Aye.
Andy Fitch?
Aye.
Alan Silly?
Aye.
Eli Badger says aye. Library. Okay, well, come on. There we go. Do you need this larger, Kathleen?
No, this is why.
Oh, oh, there we go, sorry, yeah, good.
Okay, is it, is it big enough for you now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Rob?
All right, let me jump in, I guess, um. When I first prepared this under the library, I personally didn't really know what to put. I just basically moved it forward. Since then, the library has came and presented, as we know, the Scribner Trust helps pay for a lot of their expenses that they can't pay as much. They've since asked for thirteen thousand. My thought was that being that the library was closed, they will have probably about thirteen thousand dollars rolled over from the end of the year. I've, as the expenditure report as of ten one, they have about forty percent in their budget.
And that means what in dollars, Charlie?
Well, that means, well, thirty eight point two nine technically as of then, which is twenty six thousand two thirty eight. Twenty percent of sixty eight, five twenty eight is what.
That, that, that will cover heating oil if necessary.
I assume you can encumber those funds?
Funds, yeah.
Well, they do. They do.
Okay.
It rolls back over into, any overage rolls back over to their budget.
Okay.
If you look at your expenditure report, there's literally a line that says library appropriation remain invalid.
Yeah. Okay.
They get, they get paid quarterly, and then then whatever left over. Usually, it's only about twelve, thirteen hundred dollars. I mean, they they're tight, they're pretty tight with their budget, they're
This year is, is different because they have not been opened as much.
Right.
The issue that we have, if all of you have read your email from Amanda Loud and read the emails from Walter Mitchell and is that people feel, well, Mitchell, I believe, and
Stop spending money. Don't spend another dime.
Stop spending money. Amanda Loud's question had to deal with, well, we have ten thousand dollars, well, we have have the roof to be paid for, oil to be paid for, telephone, whatever is left there, is going to be, somebody has to pay that money. Now, going forward, they're going to have to be paying for their own oil for the next five months or whatever the heating season is.
Well, hopefully, they can piggyback with the fire station, maybe get some discounts with the oil. I have a feeling that the library is going to have to probably pay for some of those expenses until legal gives us some future guidance. Next budget round, next year, will probably be a whole different animal to approach.
Well, they do have, they do have some extra money in there, they do have money in their operating budget, and I will tell you that I have a little gremlin sitting behind me.
Making noises?
Ready to strike me if I say something she doesn't like.
Yeah, again, Charlie, you've kind of reassured us that there is money that is going to be in reserve to cover those kinds of expenses going forward for the next year.
Well, yeah, and that assumes that they stay within their parameters on their wages and general expenses. I mean, I, I, I mean, we don't, library sovereign, right? We just give them the quarterly, and we just pay it, so how they, we don't, we don't really see. Now, let me show you something, too. If you go to page one of the totals, Eli, which is the bottom tab, right? This might give you a little bit more of a flexibility, I guess you could say, or comfort to see. If you go to that yellow box right there, you just had it right there.
Nine thousand nine hundred eight dollars.
Yeah, click on that one. Just click on that box. See the formula up there, it should say
J thirty six through M thirty six.
J thirty six minus M thirty six, so that's my budget minus default. So that shows you right now you are sixty nine thousand nine oh eight below default.
Okay, that's good, that's really good.
But you still have, you still have patriotic purposes, which is about ten grand.
Will it be that much this year?
I don't, that's another one, I didn't know what to do. That was a tough one for me to touch, because with, you know, we don't know what's going to happen with the Fourth of July, so I wasn't really sure where we wanted to go with that one.
Well, we know it's not going to be a town committee, they're going to have to raise their own money, so we've already voted on that.
Right, so at the very least, you know, that's a buck. So, so basically what I'm saying is if you wanted to put a little bit more in the library than I did, or the patriotic purposes, you still have flexibility to come in below default.
Well, I think we should, only because we, we cannot forget the fact that it is a town building. And, you know, we, like I said, we've been spoiled for all these years with having the Scribners pay for a lot of stuff that's now going to become our responsibility, or we don't have a library. Regardless of what happens to the trust fund or anything else, we've got to pay, you know, for the thing to continue to exist, so you know, at this point, I'm almost wanting to put a little bit more in, and, you know, they can encumber it going forward, that's just
The library and under general expenses has put twenty nine thousand dollars in, and that gives them eighty one thousand forty four dollars.
Yeah.
Uh, as we discussed, as Charlie so properly mentioned before, is that there is going to be money left over from the salaries.
Right.
How much depends on how they run the next couple of months, right?
Yep.
I mean, we're almost done with October.
I'm hoping we're almost done with twenty twenty, it's
We're almost done with twenty twenty, so the money that they have there, it would in, would take care of some of the things that they would have to deal with. I don't think that they were anticipating having to pay for the roof.
Of course.
I do think that they were anticipating, as, as we heard, them having to deal with the
Heating oil.
What is the cost of the roof?
Seven, seven thousand five hundred.
Seven thousand plus, probably.
Okay. Will that be taken care of by the thirteen thousand remaining? Plus the salaries? Are the, are the heating oil?
I've had to
What do we have left in grounds and building maintenance?
Well, I think it was about, the end of the year is fifty, but there's going to be a little, there's a couple of things that are probably going to have to come out of that, like the door out here, we might have to expend
The ten thousand dollar door.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, at least we'll be more weather tight.
Yeah.
Unless I can get it through COVID. Catherine had put in for the salaries reimbursement for COVID.
Yeah.
First responders, so anyways, fifty thousand, yep, because we gone in, and we've spent about fourteen grand this year, so forty grand.
Okay.
I, I believe that we are going to, in order to support the library, if the trust cannot be touched, if we cannot break the trust, we are going to be, the town is responsible for supporting the library unless we vote, unless
What do you mean by support? You mean the maintenance?
The maintenance.
Maintenance. We support it already, we do support it already.
But there's going to be additional needed because
There is going to be financial support that it needs.
Yeah.
Additional.
Yeah.
That was not
And they do have the capital reserve.
That's for building and for renovation. That's for renovation.
Yeah.
It doesn't
The language says improvement.
The language says renovation.
I believe the new warrant article inserted the word improvement.
You're arguing with Mardine now. The gremlin.
I don't know, I, I don't have it in front of me.
I'm sure Mardine has research.
Because words matter.
Yes.
Words, words do matter, because I was thinking this morning, when I was, was looking at this, that what's the big deal if the library trustees took it out of the capital reserves, because, well, is a renovation couldn't have renovated?
It's a repair, it's not a renovation.
Yeah.
Repair, there's a difference.
And, and Mardine bit my head off.
Well, it's not a renovation, it is a repair.
Mardine is going for the wording right now.
Okay.
Um, I will not be voting on this, folks.
I understand that.
The wording, the wording in the capital reserve article is purchase, renovate, or build.
Yes, and that's different from repair. So the roof cannot come out of that capital reserve, the way I read it. The roof is a repair.
Okay.
So, the question is, you know, where does that money come from? Does it come from the thirteen thousand that's left over? Which it can. Does it come from our building maintenance and repair capital reserve, which it can? Um, and so there's money there somewhere.
As I said, I, I believe in their budget.
It was five thousand dollars for maintenance.
There we go. That there, a combination of things could be used to at least start the process.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we're going to, this is going to have to be this is going to have to be a transition to go yeah, and we don't know how long it might take to make the transition. I'm surprised that the Mitchell group got back so soon, so to me, that was promising. Hopefully, it might, it won't be a cumbersome process to go through, and next year will be a whole new way of looking at the building and how it's managed.
I, I agree, Kathleen. So the question is, do we go back to what was voted last year when the Scribners were paying, even though there's money left over? Or do we start paving the way by giving them another couple thousand to just
I'm willing to give them a little extra money, couple of thousand, and they use their funds left over from this year, I
Agree.
The question has been broached to me, and I will ask, should the trustee, the library trustees, since we allowed Steve to come back to explain something, should we allow the library trustees to come back?
I think their lines were pretty self-evident. They added for fuel, if, if I remember correctly, I can't remember the exact amount, and five thousand dollars for building maintenance.
Yeah.
I, I would say maybe, maybe three, three thousand for building maintenance.
Plus the, plus whatever they roll over.
Of course, whatever they roll over, that looks like they're acting in good faith, hopefully, it will satisfy some of those negative comments out in the public about how certain departments are managed. So I'm willing to consider that. I, I don't believe they need to come back and explain it. The only two lines they added was for maintenance and for, for heating oil.
Right.
All right, let me, let me
Phone, phone, I think, was maybe the other thing.
Let me, let me, how about if I, well, oh, I don't, do you know how they came up with wages? I was going to propose something else.
How you came up with wages?
I got it right here.
Okay. We have a salary sale.
Yeah, why did you go back to last year's, Charlie?
I just carried it forward, I didn't know where to go, I just
Okay, okay.
Charlie did this, we weren't where we are now with
When he made, when he made his prediction.
Yeah.
The library trustees had not
Okay.
finished.
Okay, so
Their finishing note showed, as you can see, about a three thousand dollar increase in the salary lines.
Yep. So, I, I, if I were to propose something new, I would say the wages go up three percent like everyone else, we have pretty much across the board, and then the general expense line up seventy five hundred for the five thousand dollar maintenance, and I think it was twenty five hundred dollars in oil.
Okay. So what are you, new number?
That comes to seventy seven thousand four sixty eight. It's a little bit below what they requested, but
And a little bit of
So can you put in Charlie's numbers now that, is it, you're controlling this, Eli, right?
Yeah, so it's forty five nine thirty eight.
Forty five nine thirty eight?
Yeah, they should pre-populate except for the general expenses.
Yeah.
That would be twenty eight thousand zero one six.
Twenty eight one
Zero one six.
Six.
Zero one six, which is four grand less than what they asked for. But it looks like it's more in the margin that they'll be required to spend.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I guess, and you could say it's a good faith effort.
And that, and I think that that on top of what they'll have for a rollover this year.
Everything should be taken care, care of.
Will go a long way towards
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, I am going to ask for a roll call vote.
For what? We haven't had a motion yet.
Well. True, I'm gonna ask for a motion for seventy-seven thousand four hundred sixty-eight dollars for the library.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Do I hear any further discussion? Hearing none. Kathleen DeWolf?
Aye.
Fran Newton?
Aye.
Andy Fitch?
Aye.
Alan Silly?
Aye.
And I abstain.
Okay.
Moving on, patriotic purposes. And under patriotic purposes, there's one dollar.
Yeah, um. As of the end of November, everybody's appointments will have ended. They were told, warned a year ago to begin the process of being a outside agency. So they can have control. Of the funds they raise, instead of having the town have oversight over them. And I have not seen, I have no idea at all what they might have raised this year in donations. But what they had last year, I believe, no matter how you cut it, they could have paid for the detail. Out of what they had in that fund.
Okay. Uh, Memorial Day supplies, we've cut to nothing, we've removed that from the, uh, and the heritage.
Well. Well, once again, they did not bring forward a budget request.
Yep.
It's not upon, it's not us to. Guess what they want.
Absolutely.
Uh, so I don't, I don't know. Why they haven't provided us with the information, so it has the.
There still is a dollar in there.
Yep, that's the placeholder.
That's the placeholder.
Uh, do we just put these all a dollar in case something, uh? If someone comes with a warrant article, which we did read in their minutes, that says, um. You know, we want to keep this committee alive, and we're gonna, we wanna raise and appropriate a certain amount of money, then we have a dollar to put the money in.
My question is, would that be advisory?
Like, it depends on what the vote, I, I don't know.
Well, if we've already said that they're no longer a town committee.
And they're under the BOS now.
They're under the BOS now, but if they come forward with a warrant article, it would be separate from our budget. It would be a five, you know, whatever they wanna raise for the Fourth of July, that would go in, but do, do we need to put it in our budget when they're not a town committee?
We have it as a default, that's the only.
Yeah, but we're assuming that will, our budget will be approved, not that it's all.
I mean, if you don't put a dollar, the line goes away.
Goes away.
All right, put in the dollar. I, I don't, I, I just don't want the assumption being that they're gonna become a town committee.
Oh, no, no, yeah, I mean, there's no money there to.
Right.
No, no, and if, if they think it will make it, it, it'll just make things even more complicated than it'll, they still would have to be under. It wouldn't be a statutory.
There is now a bottom line of five dollars.
Okay.
Do I? Do I hear a motion?
I, I'll make that motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Do I hear any further discussion? Hearing none. Kathleen DeWolf?
Aye.
Fran Newton?
Aye.
Andy Fitch?
Aye.
Alan Silly?
Aye.
Eli Badger says aye. Conservation Commission? General expenses, we have one dollar.
That's the, because it is not a seating, uh, seating, whatnot. Functioning commission right now, they do not have any members.
That's right.
Yep, so the dollar would be the placeholder.
Unless you want to pay the dues.
Why are you paying the dues?
I haven't paid them.
Well, I, why?
I, I, I haven't, I was just saying, I got the. Measure, member, members.
No, because that would be their request to pay for a budget to pay the dues. I don't think we should take it upon ourselves to pay dues for a committee that hasn't existed for three years. And it's, it was only for the Hampshire. Conservation Commission, what is that? Can't remember. Oh, New Hampshire Association of Conservation Commissions.
They can always reapply, should they.
That's right.
We have a dollar there.
Yeah.
You're correct, and it could be something they might not feel they even need to pay dues towards.
Okay.
When I was on the board three and a half years ago, it was during northern pass, and they had a lobbyist, so we felt it was. It was money well-spent to have, um, conservation commissions to have a voice at that level.
Okay. Thank you for that. I'd make a motion to approve a dollar for the Conservation Commission.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Kathleen DeWolf?
Aye.
Fran Newton?
Aye.
Andy Fitch?
Aye.
Alan Silly?
Aye.
Eli Badger says aye. Debt service. Do you need it bigger, Kathleen?
No, Eli, but thank you for asking.
Looks like we already put it in. We did that the other day.
Yeah.
Well, Charlie said that we had.
That was just before, because you really, towns.
We have a choice.
Have to know.
It is what it is.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we just move those forward with a. Straight up.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're at water.
Okay, what? The difference?
It's about a two grand difference. It's less than. And Charlie took out a fifteen hundred dollar computer. He doesn't think that they need it.
Uh, they bought it this year.
They bought it this year, okay.
Okay.
That's good.
That's good, yeah. Then I will go with. Um, the town manager's bottom line for. Water.
Uh.
Unless somebody else has.
I have a question.
Okay.
Uh, Charlie, do you know what the estimated receipts for the department are?
Uh, not right now, but I have the accountants looking into it. You talking about revenue?
I'm talking about revenue. Uh, I mean, this is, to me, this is one of the areas, um, that. We wanna spend two hundred and twenty-four thousand eight hundred ninety-nine dollars.
What is the, how much of the revenue will cover that?
That's what I wanna know.
Um, I, I, I believe the general public still doesn't understand. That. The revenue covers.
Is supposed to cover.
Well, supposed to cover the cost of the utilities, correct.
I have a question. Now that the utilities are under the town manager. Um, but their expenses are offset by revenue and don't impact taxes, do we still get separate votes? Um, on the, on the warrant, with their budget versus our budget?
Yep.
Okay, all right. I just wanna make sure that they're still, they're gonna be separated out.
You still vote on the franchises.
Okay, okay, just wanna make sure.
I believe the town voted to extract them.
Yeah, that would, Fran, that would, no one put that into motion to separate it.
No, I, I, I understand that, but that was before we had, um, a town manager. And I just wanna make sure that because they're enterprise funds, they still get to be voted on separately.
Yeah, I, yeah.
It makes sense that they. Even now, it makes sense that they should be voted on, but it's not a, they don't pay.
It's, it's not taxable money.
It's not taxed.
Yeah, I, yeah, okay.
Okay.
We, when we prepare the, um, the MS two. These budgets just, they roll over on the revenue side.
Okay.
Um, Alan, do you have anything you wanna comment on?
It's gonna be close. I have been following the, the income, so to speak. It's gonna be close, and when I say close, I don't believe it's gonna be over. I'm gonna believe, I believe it's gonna be under, revenue's gonna be under two twenty-four. It's just my opinion, but.
We'd be looking at an increase.
Yes.
An increase in fees?
I guess that's what he's talking about.
Okay, yeah.
I, I. That's the only way that it's gonna happen, but, uh. It's gonna be close, that's all I'm gonna say.
Okay.
Okay, is there any other? Pre-motion discussion? And from the past, I will say that. The expenses look about right. So. I'll accept a motion for two thou, uh, for two hundred twenty-four thousand eight hundred ninety-nine dollars.
I'll make that motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? Kathleen DeWolf?
Aye.
Fran Newton?
Aye.
Andy Fitch?
Aye.
Alan Silly?
Aye.
Eli Badger says aye.
Um, one thing about this, real quick, I will say, um, when Alan said it's gonna be close. There is a little bit of, I would say, discretion, uh, when it comes to water and sewer expenses. I don't know if you remember correctly, uh, when we transitioned to town manager, we changed the expense ratio to seventy-two twenty-eight. It used to be fifty-fifty between water and. Right? And then we in turn raised the water rate, so the cash flow on the water side has, it has increased. I mean, they, because of that, before they were in the hole. Um, so you do have some flexibility that we can reassess this if we're, uh, get into the bottom line and, um. Make adjustments.
And, and I agree, Charlie, I was not gonna get into that part of it, but as you know, I disagree with that formula. But that's.
I don't know, I mean, that was a prior, uh, consultant that they got from the commissioners.
Okay.
You do have some flexibility there, if things.
There, there is a certain amount of flexibility, yes.
You get tight.
Okay. Moving on to sewer.
Oh, okay. They're the same. I'll make a motion to accept four thousand two hundred twenty-five.
Four hundred thousand.
Hundred and twenty-five, yeah. I'll second.
It's for four hundred twenty-five thousand four hundred and twenty-eight.
Yeah.
Do I hear a second?
I seconded it.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none. Kathleen DeWolf? Fran Newton?
Aye.
Andy Fitch?
Aye.
Alan Silly?
Aye.
Eli Badger says aye. Moving on. We are now at the electric department.
Oh, okay. Hmm.
Bottom line.
It's lower than last year. Uh, I will say that.
Charlie, if you couldn't make it less than last year. There would be something wrong.
Yeah. Well.
Well, I see the vehicle rent went up quite a bit.
The big, the bond principal payment.
Yeah.
And, uh, there's also no depreciation, uh, budget. So everyone knows how depreciation works, um, and what I've seen, the way it's worked with this department. Uh, and their budget depreciation is supposed to be an expenditure that's put back into capital. You expend for it, but the, the expense is supposed to go back into capital. What I mean by that is, of, of course, your substation, your poles, your transformers, your trucks, your vehicles. All the capital expense, uh, so that you, you, you know, over a period of time, you turn it over. Uh, this, from what I've saw, if I'll analyze in the last five years of their, uh, audits, a lot of the depreciation that was being utilized was to offset the bottom line. The loss, the depreciation wasn't being put back in, that's why we rented a vehicle for seventy-two thousand a year, um. If it wasn't being done, I remember correctly, uh. We just took it out. With that also being said, I do have, uh, within the next, uh, probably week or so, I, um. We're getting an engineer looking at some capital improvements for the department, uh, in particular the substitution, uh, the new meters. We have a poll study being done, uh, in December. So you'll get a better idea as to what you need. This power purchase line does not include the power purchase for New Hampton. That ends in December. We had our new linesman start today, so we are back to getting properly staffed in to cover the outages, to handle the work that needs to be done. Last year, when I started, uh, town manager, we had one employee. Since then, we've been able to increase to three linesmen.
So we have a staff of four now.
Yep, yeah.
So this department said we need to CIP program. I knew that would bring a chuckle from you, Fran.
No, yeah.
How do you spell that, Kathleen?
Capital I, capital P, yeah. Um, yeah, um, I don't know how we're gonna do it, but we gotta get something in place, um. Some sort of, at least list numbered one through ten and. At least.
I, that's what I said. I have that coming.
Okay.
Uh, we did a walkthrough last week with, uh, PLM engineering. I'm supposed to get a proposal. I wasn't all warm and fuzzy with the engineer about how quick he could get it through, but technically, he made it imply like if it was a big number, we could move it forward. we could move it forward to town meeting. I know we need new meters. Personally, I think we might be able to put that into the budget or maintain it through our budget as from what I'm hearing, uh, it doesn't have, the pain is not to start for another two years.
You talking about a warrant article?
I'm sorry?
Are you talking about a warrant article for like the meters or something?
Well, uh, depending on what the number is, hopefully we can just put it in the budget and, uh, you know, basically save it, right?
You mean like for a dollar just to save the line and then?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, Alan?
Yeah, yeah, don't, I don't wanna just edit on this.
Yeah. Well, uh, but I don't know. I, one thing that I was told, it's not as easy just going out to get a quote for meters, right? Because there's different type of meters, there's different, uh, type of phases, and they have to go through all the properties to determine what is the right meter. Uh, so that's why it's taken a while to get to, get us a number.
Okay.
No, it's gonna take us a while to set this department on two strong legs, I'm afraid. And to increase the rate payers, you know, either people hate the department or still live in the, uh, you know, the belief that it's cheaper, we have the cheapest electricity in the whole area. And it's getting to a point where I, I can't even explain it in simple terms when I'm asked. So.
Okay.
Can, can you fit the, um, meters and any of those other lines, Charlie?
Other than equipment? Electric.
A new line? And, you know, if you get an opportunity to buy meters and you don't pay for them for two years, I mean, can, can that be in a?
That equipment line is a line that we can.
Okay, because I mean, I do think we need to look into those. Would do.
Yeah.
It's ridiculous that we have some, they're still manually read.
And they've been talk, this has been talked about for how many years now?
Yeah, right.
Now, but the meters, there's a, it's also sort of like what you wanna buy too, right? Because it's sort of, and Eli and Alan probably understand this a little bit when it comes to when they replace the water. I mean, there's a, there's a scale here. And what I mean by that is it's how much data you want them to collect.
Okay, yeah.
Right? If you want them to do more, I mean, check the temperature on the line, uh, you know, it can do that. Uh, and it depends, you know, but then it's like, what are you gonna do with that data? Gonna analyze it, uh, and where's it gonna go? Uh, those, these are some of the things that you can do with the type of meter that you buy.
Yeah.
Are these the so-called smart meters? That people refer to as smart meters that can do more than just read your use.
Yes.
You know, all that is a discussion for another day. That's not, we need to decide on now. I just.
No, you don't. I'm just trying to give you, I'm just trying to give you a little bit of a heads up. What's gonna come and, and we'll be looking at and what you have to decide on.
Right.
I, I don't, yeah, we don't probably need all the bells and whistles, uh, and we don't have the enough staff to really take that and analyze.
Right.
Okay, so we're looking at, Alan, you have something to say?
Not, not to beat up on this conversation, but, um, I, I do feel that it should be in this year's budget, but around numbers to buy meters would be three hundred thousand. And with the so-called projected loss in meter reading that we would have at ten percent, they would be paid for in one year.
And I believe.
The longer we wait to fix this problem, and I'm not gonna say it's gonna cost more money, but we're, we're gonna get further and further behind. And that's all I'm gonna beat up on with, with that. Thank you.
I think that's good information, Alan. And again, you know, Charlie said there's possibilities of getting these meters and paying for them in the future. That's why I wanted to know if we could initiate things given the current budget without, without setting aside three hundred thousand.
I appreciate you bringing it up, Fran. Um, and that's just, that's a rough estimate, but three hundred thousand is, is close, close.
I'm hearing two fifty to three hundred, two fifty to three hundred, which we probably have two years to pay.
Yeah.
So.
And it could be a warrant article for next year. Um, again, I'm all for moving this forward as quickly as possible. I'm just not sure we wanna put three hundred thousand in this budget without, you know, further information. It'd be a high priority for the coming year.
I, I agree with you, Fran. But it ha, we have to have it somewhere there, so it, at least we can have a discussion about it.
Exactly, exactly.
Well, a discussion about what, exactly what we're gonna do, not that, well, we need to do it, and we need to do it sooner rather than later.
Right, right. No, there needs to be a well-thought-out plan that's presented to the public.
The only thing I will just add to that, if we do not consider it right now, the only other alternative is to have an immediate rate increase.
Well, that's, I just wanna make sure that there's room for any of that in this budget without creating a new line or a warrant article.
You still have, there isn't, enough time. I mean, you have till February, right? We, we're gonna probably talk about the deliberative.
Okay.
You know, that's three months away.
Okay, so, you know, we can approve what's here, but I, you know, we need to keep this on the front burner so that we don't let it go by.
I, I, I'm trying to get them in here as fast as I can and get them in front of the board. Uh, it's just, I was told, it's not that easy trying to get a quote on all these.
No, I understand that. That's why we're not ready to put any lumber down, but.
I was shocked myself, uh, but, um, trust me, they wanna sell to you guys.
I'm sure.
Oh, that's for sure.
So given all that, I'd make a motion to approve two million seven hundred ninety-eight thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Kathleen DeWolf?
Aye.
Brad Newton?
Aye.
Andy Fitch?
Aye.
Alan Silly? Eli Badger says aye. Default budget. Charlie, I'm gonna leave that up to you.
Okay, so the default budget is actually the Board of Selectmen's responsibility. This isn't one that the Budget Committee puts together.
Okay.
Correct.
So right now, you have told us that our default line is at three million four hundred sixty-two dollars. Is that correct?
Yes.
And you've taken all of the necessary calculations to come up with that?
Yes. Go to each, you can go to each tab and you can see, uh, there is a default, default line.
There's a default budget for every single line.
Yep. And as I mentioned before, the budget that I proposed, which is basically what the Board of Selectmen proposed, right now, that is sixty thousand dollars below the, um, the default.
Hey, I'm, I'm thrilled. Yes.
Any other comments? What do you want us to say, Charlie? Lean forward. You have that aggressive look.
Yes, come on. You gotta prep for tomorrow. Was it your budget meeting tomorrow?
Uh, yeah, yeah.
Yep, you gotta.
I, I, well, it, I've been thinking about this one a lot, and what I was saying is, yes, it's below, uh, default, but, um, you have to admit, it's tough. I mean, we really reduced our budget here. It looks like it's only sixty thousand, but there are obligations that we had to increase, like, yay, and keeping a three percent across the board, uh.
Okay, Charlie, I'm gonna pat you on the head for this one and say, you did, you, you don't have to tell us what a good job you do did this time.
I'm not saying that.
No, I think you've done a great job in putting this together.
It's still got, it's still might be difficult for us in departments next year to manage this two-point-nine budget. Right? I mean, at the beginning, I said it's risk. I mean, we're, you know, we're sixty grand below. Uh, we're gonna have to, you know, make it work.
As much as possible, it ha, it has to work. I agree that there is risk to what this is. But you've justified the risk. I think that's, as I said, I think you've done an admirable job in doing that and explaining the risk to us.
Yep.
And it kinda goes back to what, you know, Alan was talking about with, look, trying to take care of our employees, right? I mean, I didn't try to cut anything from the employees. That's why I tried to stand tall with the, the three percent across the board with everybody, you know? Uh, so then we know, um, you know, we support staff, uh, we, we appreciate what they do for the town. You know, I think that's very significant to show. I mean, if this budget passes, we'll still be able to provide that three percent.
Yeah. Okay. Do I hear?
What's the bottom line?
Three million. I can't see the.
Sixty-two dollars.
Or, okay, three million four hundred and sixty-two for default.
I'll make the motion to accept the default budget.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion on the default budget? Hearing none. Kathleen DeWolf?
Aye.
Brad Newton?
Aye.
Andy Fitch?
Aye.
Alan Silly?
Aye.
Eli Badger says aye. So you got your default?
Yep.
Um, we don't have many warrant articles coming up this year, I understand.
Um, I can, I can show, I ju, I prepared the warrant as a draft on Friday.
Well, clearly, we're gonna need another meeting to, to discuss the.
So far, Charlie has put fifty-two thousand one hundred and forty-two dollars into the warrant articles. Is that right?
I don't know how they come up with fifty-two.
Yeah, I don't know either.
I'm looking, it says town manager. I came right downtown manager, went to line thirty-eight warrant articles.
Yeah.
And there is a number in there that says fifty-two thousand one hundred forty-two dollars.
That doesn't make any sense, given we have roads and.
I.
Okay, but that's why I said we need another meeting. That, that fifty-two thousand makes zero sense.
Yeah, cuz it says I sixteen, I twenty-nine, and I thirty-seven. Oh, I see, oh, there, I get it, yep. Uh, it's taken, it's taken the public works loader lease, which, uh, we're required to do, and below, it's the, it's adding in the contingency fund.
Yeah, but there are other warrant articles we need to discuss, right?
Uh, not really. The only ones that I had, well, I have to talk to, we have a department head meeting on Thursday, and I'm gonna talk about capital reserve funds to try to finalize some numbers there. We don't know what we're gonna get from petition warrant articles. Uh, the other, the only departments that have approached me about anything thus far is the police department with the cameras, remember, for body cameras, about ten, ten grand.
Yep.
And, uh, Steve had, um, another one, I think something for the air tanks that he needed, which was about thirty grand, uh. Those to me are basically layups. Uh, we have a really solid, I think, uh, unassigned fund balance that's increased over to a million dollars. So forty grand right now is not much to come out of that.
Yeah.
We ended last year at seven hundred and eighty thousand.
That's wonderful.
Uh, I don't know if you saw the email that I sent today about the util, new utilities assessment, but that's a, that's a big tax increase for the town, or acceptance. It's a big tax bill that's going out.
Yeah.
Uh, that will, you know, help your bottom, uh, unassigned fund balance.
Right.
So, you know, we'll have that question. Are we gonna use some of that to reduce the taxes, which?
Well, you can use some of it to pay for the capital reserve funds instead, which is the same as reducing taxes.
Which has to be explained.
Again, that's right, because you pay for capital expenses, you're paying for something that would cost you a lot of money, and it's a long-term gain, whereas if you reduce the taxes for one year, it's a short-term gain. And you still gotta buy that stuff, so, you know.
I, I, we've been.
I know, Charlie's done a great job with using, uh, un, uh, unassigned fund balance to pay for capital expenses. Fabulous, fabulous.
Yep, yep.
But you know it's gonna be mentioned.
Yeah, of course, we're sitting on a slush fund. I've heard it before.
Yeah.
Anyway.
I, I mean, I definitely recommend the contingency fund. We do that every year to take the unassigned fund balance. We no longer have the GIS, uh, warrant article, the.
Supply truck.
Yep, the fire engine is coming off. I mean, as you can see right there, the total warrant articles last year was four hundred and thirty-six thousand. As we stand right now, we're at forty, fifty-two.
Yeah, but there's more than, there's gotta be more than that, Charlie. We usually, there's way more than that.
It depends on, uh, how the capital reserves gets funded.
Yeah, I understand, but we've always had a hundred and twenty-five thousand for roads, we've had twenty-five or thirty thousand for police vehicles, we've had fire vehicles, we've had library, there's a bunch of things that we need to discuss.
Yep, the library, I already asked for the twenty-five thousand.
Yeah.
Uh, I have to remember, one of the vehicles, I think, is a skip year. I think PD might be a skip year on the vehicle. Remember, uh, but, but look, you know. You have financial flexibility with your unassigned fund balance to fund those articles, so there isn't taxation.
Okay.
You, you have the option to do that.
Okay.
What's next, Charlie?
I voted on the deliberative session day.
I agree that we should put it on the first available date in February, leaving a snow date, and this again, assuming that we can meet in person.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Which is February sixth. The thirteenth, the week after for the snow day.
Yep.
Usually how we do it?
Yep.
And I guess we better pick a time.
Nine AM.
What did we do last year?
You know, we do ten.
I think we did ten.
Yeah. Why don't we stick with ten? We, we tried different times and it can't accommodate everybody.
Right.
Schedule, so ten o'clock gives you people plenty of time to get up, get going.
Okay.
Ten o'clock? Do we need to take a vote on this?
How about a consensus?
For me.
You wanna vote?
Charlie wants a vote because. Charlie wants a vote because.
Kathleen?
Yes, I'll make the motion to make February 6, 2021 at 10 o'clock. The date of our deliberative session with February 13th. At 10 o'clock is the snow day.
Do I hear a second?
So moved, seconded.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, Kathleen DeWolf. Brad Newton. Andy Fitch. Alan Silly. Eli Badger says aye.
Um, your next meeting is this cup coming Monday. Does the Board want to move that?
Oh, because of election?
You guys are gonna have a long day that next day.
Yeah, I would be happy to move it.
So, I didn't know if you wanted to.
Move it to the, to the second, ninth?
It won't bother me none. I, I mean, I, I can certainly make it.
Any, Charlie, it will not bother you.
Little grammar thing there, Charlie, it's okay.
I mean, we, we did that, we.
We're from Laconia, I know, it's different.
We talk different down there.
Well, we did that in September, and we had two meetings in a row, and it didn't seem to.
I mean, you gotta have.
Yeah, I mean, we're supposed to be there at, what, like 7:30? I, I would think it would be great if we could push the meeting off a week. Which is a reminder to everybody that we need to be there and cover it as much as possible, especially at the end.
Do I hear a motion?
Oh, I'll make motion that we postpone the November 2nd meeting to Monday, November 9.
I did.
Okay. Kathleen DeWolf. Brad Newton. Andy Fitch. Alan Silly. Eli Badger says aye.
We have not heard anything from the, um, clerk or the moderator?
Yeah, we, we need to get some information about how, what the setup is gonna be. I'm assuming, like, the September meeting, it would be in the gym, masks, mask required. My question is, last time the Board sat outside to monitor the potential of an absentee ballot drop box. Don't know what the weather's gonna be yet, but, you know, we need to think about how we're gonna manage that safety perspective.
My question is, according to that wonderful thick booklet that we.
That you've read cover to cover, I know, you're so.
What are our actual re, legal responsibilities?
Just to oversee the election.
Oversee the election, yes.
And that's it.
That is it.
To make sure the process is happening.
It is not to.
Be ballot clerk.
Be ballot clerks or.
But we've always.
By the, uh, town moderator?
We've always been there to fill in though, so people can take breaks, and I have no issue with that, but you're right, but that's.
Well, I don't know if you know it, Fran, I had to be a ballot clerk for two hours because they had somebody that didn't show up, so.
It's, it's one thing to volunteer to help. It's another to be assigned task, and having to sit outside for any length of time.
Not doing it.
I admit that I have a compromised immune system.
Yes, you do.
And part of that is poor circulation.
Yep, no, we, we, we can't do that. Last September was fine, but it's not gonna be fine on November 3rd. So, you know, it's just, I don't, they need to decide how they wanna handle. In case, I mean, we only had three people show up that would refuse to wear a mask and filled out an absentee ballot. With any luck, they've learned their lesson and will either have already voted absentee or will comply and wear a mask. So, I'm assuming, I'm hoping, being optimistic, that those duties are not going to be required. But somebody out there, somebody needs to be there to say, oh, it can't go in without a mask. Now, can that be done in the hallway? No, I don't think they should even be in the building, so, you know, I, I don't, it's not our job to figure this out. But we need to make sure that it's been done.
So, should we send a memo?
To the moderator and town clerk? Charlie, you look glazed.
Yeah, cuz he, you know, he, he gets put in the middle of it.
Uh, I was just, I was, uh, looking, I already made note to ask the clerk. If there's any changes from the primary.
Okay, well, there have to be changes, cuz the weather is different.
Yeah, it's not gonna be 90 degrees like it was on September 11.
Unless they got heaters out there, which we talked about in September, but no, nobody, especially Eli, but none of us wants to sit out there in the cold.
And we weren't provided with very good seating arrangements.
Horrible.
Yeah, I, I was planning on having to bring my own chair.
So, anything in particular you want me to ask them?
Yeah, have they thought about the process vis-à-vis safety and, you know, people who come and don't wanna wear masks, and who's gonna make sure that they're compliant?
The other thing I thought of too, I'm sure the turnout's gonna be heavy. And people are just gonna congregate right there at the entrance of the door. It's almost like they need someone in the hallway to allow, however, so many people in at one time, because I don't know how many. They did cut down on the booths, I believe, the voting areas to, for the social distancing.
Yeah, you might ask the town clerk how many absentee ballots have been submitted, because that could tell us a lot. Not that many more were submitted for the primary, but then again, primaries don't get a big turnout. But this one will be a big turnout either on the day or leading up to it. So, you know, she's gotten only 100 absentee ballots.
And when we could have first time, uh, you know, right, you know, voter registration, and that, that slows down. The, um, that area where the supervisors of the checklist.
Right, so, the whole process needs to be gone over and ensure that we have social distancing and, you know, compliance checks and that other stuff.
Just so everybody knows, a long-range forecast, high 40s during the day, 29 degrees at night.
My husband keeps saying, Andy, he's gonna write a book called The Weather Channel Ruined My Life, but. But it's nice to know, at least there's no blizzard in the forecast.
Oh, we had those two years in a row, didn't we?
Yeah, we did. You know, we can hope for the best, but even 49 is kinda chilly to sit out there, especially for those of us who are older.
Snowmobile gear.
There you go. I can, you know, get my toe warmers and my hand warmers from ski equipment, so, whatever, we just need to know what they've thought of. Taking into account the concerns we've just raised. So, if you could find out, Charlie, that would be great.
On the only, um, idea I had as a ballot clerk at the first table is, uh, I, I, I did tell Eli this, that maybe you can pass it on, Charlie. When people pull out their license for the supervisors and the checklist, have the supervisors tell them, keep your license out until you get your ballot. At least at table number one, people are pushing it back into their wallet, and we're having to ask them to pull it back out. Uh, I didn't get any attitude in September, but we got a little attitude last fall, did we not, Fran?
We, we did indeed. Like I said, I'm hoping they've learned their lesson, but no guarantees.
Anything else?
Thank you, everybody.
I have a.
Guys have a schedule?
I have a quick question. Our meeting on the 19th, has that been posted reviewing?
19th of what?
The 19th.
The 19th. The reason I've asked is people can't find it.
October 19th, right?
It's taken down. You mean last weeks? Oh, I take it down, I took it down. I mean, what do you mean, I mean.
Oh, no, the video.
Oh, the video. I was like.
No, 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 no.
I post in two places when that's done.
Did I screw up or not? Hit the record button?
I think maybe that happened. I've had four or five people ask me. Anyway. If it's not there, I don't believe it will be there. I mean, it's, whatever.
Hold on a second, I can look, I can log online to see if it's, Andrew just might not have pulled it yet. He asked me today about the one for.
Yeah, cuz the PB cam was there, it's not Eli's job to record it.
No, 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 I have to record it. Unless Char, unless Charlie starts recording it bef, from the beginning before he switches over. And I very, I very well could have thought I hit the button and it didn't. I didn't check it.
Yeah, I must see it out there. It's not on Zoom.
I'll, I'll check my, I'll see if I can find it on my computer.
One from the 22nd, that's the one that Andrew. Gosh, what did we, what was the thing? What was the meeting on that about?
And now I can't even remember, I have to pull the agenda.
The 19th?
I don't remember offhand.
It was, it was the one with.
I have it, repaving the high, the high, repaving at the highway garage. The joint meeting with, uh, with the trustees, the subscribers, and the library. And reconsideration playground, tram cover, bridge replacement, finance assistant. Were people trying to access it off the town website or from YouTube?
Both. Is my understanding.
I don't see it on mine right this minute.
Eli, I'll have to take a look.
As I said, I could, uh, it's very easily, I could have punched the button and it didn't, and I missed it, and I didn't look.
Yeah, like the last meeting, I think, the one before, I think you recorded it to, to your computer. Hey, we have the minutes, those will be voted upon. Uh, you're not obligated to record every time, it's something.
The, the people like it. I've heard a couple, well, I've heard a couple people actually say they do like to be, uh, be able to zoom in, and I, and I apologize if I did not hit it properly. Okay, anything else?
Motion to adjourn?
Charlie's already running for the door.
Hi, Charlie.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.